Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's action meeting. We have a video to present tonight, so edit.
Hello and welcome to this North Penn News update. I'm Anissa Gardisi. When in Square Elementary students were not afraid to get their hands dirty for Earth Day, led by sixth grade teacher Derek Fickert, students, staff, and parent volunteers helped to clean up the school grounds, pull weeds, plant and mow some flower beds, and decorate sidewalks with beautiful artwork, celebrating our Mother Earth. Our award-winning bus drivers were recognized at a recent outdoor barbecue at the Transportation Department for their accomplishments at the local bus rodeo competition. They also celebrated successfully making it through another winter season in the Northeast. Walton Farm Elementary held an hour of code and STEM night event to celebrate the original research conducted and shared by Walton Farm students. A big thank you also goes out to parents and staff for organizing these incredible events that encourage our students to dream big and achieve greatness in and out of the classroom. May Day, May Day, the May Fair is back. The North Penn Music Aids hosted a day to feature North Penn music, enjoy some great food, and have a little bit of fun. Performances included elementary, middle, and high school groups, including a performance by the North Penn Marching Knights. Almost as popular as the student performances was a dunk tank where band director Mr. Heller may have raised half of the day's fundraising goal in just half an hour. Popular guy, that Mr. Heller. It was an enchanted evening for the class of 2018 at their senior prom. Held once again at Ruxel Brook, prom night was a great time for beautiful dresses, flashy tuxedos, and a fun night on the dance floor. The senior prom is the unofficial kickoff to graduation at North Penn High School. The focus of this week's in-service was a story of a child. Staff from across the district spent their day learning how they can help each student on their journey through North Penn, whether through a data assessment or a crisis intervention. This in-service is just one of the countless ways we work to serve our students in the best way possible each and every day. Congratulations to senior Brittany Crossen for winning first place for her individual reel entry into the Walt Disney Teen Animation Festival. In addition, Jared Annless and Tyler Kratz's work was also showcased among work from students across the world. Congratulations. North Penn Unified Track Team came in third yesterday at Sauterston, and many of our athletes are now headed to the Montgomery County Special Olympics next week. Congratulations to the Unified Track Team on an awesome season. North Penn High School received a silver ranking from U.S. News and World Reports as a top public high school, ranking 1,557 nationally and 54th in the state. More than 21,000 schools were evaluated and only 5,900 earning a medal recognition. Congratulations to all of the staff and students at North Penn on this tremendous recognition. For all of these stories and more, be sure to visit youtube.com/mtv. For North Penn Television, I'm Anissa Gardisi. Have a good night.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd just like to make an announcement regarding executive session. We did not meet an executive session last week on Thursday, nor did we meet an executive session tonight. So now we'll be moving on to proclamations. Dr. Dietrich?
Yes. This evening, we do have quite a few students to recognize, so once again, we did move over here to help move the line through more expeditiously. We are very pleased this evening to recognize students for being members of the 2017-18 North Wales Select Choir, and they did perform at the Pennsylvania Educators Music Association's Conference. And with us this evening to do the introductions, we have Tracy Calvaresi, Director of the North Wales Select Choir.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us tonight. It's my pleasure to be the Director of the North Wales Elementary School Select Choir. The Select Choir is comprised of 37 4th, 5th, and 6th grade students, and they performed at the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association Annual Conference in Lancaster, Pennsylvania on Thursday, April 19th. It's quite an honor to be invited to perform at PMEA, as over 130 groups from throughout Pennsylvania submitted recorded auditions for this prestigious event. The North Wales Elementary Select Choir was the only elementary choir from across the state invited to perform, and this was the second time the group was invited to perform by the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association. Tonight, we have with us Claire Adams, Matthew Edelman, Gabriela Carrucho, Olivia Castle, Elena Davis, Alicia Dewalt, Cassidy Flanagan, Nicholas Gopal, Tyler Greco, Bridget Hanley, Anna Heisen was not able to be here tonight. Cassidy Johnson is here with us. Isabel Juarez. Ella Juska and Lily Juska were not able to be here tonight. Molly Keegan. Kelsey Keely. McKenna Kelsey. Caitlin Lynch. Elizabeth Miller. Catherine Pinkney was not able to be here tonight. Rose Pinkney. Olivia Riddler. Samantha Riddler. Zachary Riddler. Sachi Signoff. Savannah Smith, Peyton Stagliano, Sawyer Steinbauer, and Melanie Stiles were unable to be here tonight. Kalen Thompson. Vincent Thomasello and Paige Wagner were unable to be here tonight. And Noel Warner. It's worth noting that of the 27 ensembles that performed at the conference this year, four of them were from North Penn, more than any other school district in the state. The fact that those four groups represent elementary, middle school, and high school, both choral and instrumental music, reflects the excellence of the music program here in North Penn. The high-quality music education offered to students in North Penn is evident in the repeated presence of North Penn students at conferences. Instrumental and choral ensembles from the North Penn School District have been invited to perform at state, regional, national, and international conferences over 75 times in the last 20 years. We also see the benefits of music education in these talented students and their peers every day. In addition to creativity and musical technique, we see individuals who develop perseverance, self-confidence, nonverbal communication skills, time management skills, problem-solving skills, and understanding and respect for people from a variety of cultures and backgrounds. Thank you for your continued support of music education here in North Penn.
Thank you again, Mrs. Calvaresi. Another hand for the kids. So next up, I think, is the Bridle Path. Ready? Just go out. Okay. Get out.
This evening, we're pleased to recognize students that are members of the 2018 Bridle Path Montgomery Elementary String Ensemble. They were invited to perform at Carnegie Hall, New York, and they were selected to perform at the Pennsylvania Educators Music Association's Conference. With us this evening to do the introductions, we have the Director of the Bridle Path Montgomery String Ensemble, Ralph Jackson.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm Ralph Jackson, and I brought some of my students this evening. As Dr. Dietrich said, we also performed at the PMEA Conference this year. This was our sixth performance at that conference for this group. And in addition, they were invited by audition to participate in the International Symphonic Series International Band and Orchestra Adjudication Festival at Carnegie Hall, where they were in the highest rating of Superior, and they were the only elementary group that was invited to perform at this adjudication. So we really had a great year, and they brought a lot of recognition and pride to our school district and to their own schools and families in the community. So I'm happy to be here. Thank you for recognizing these students. This really means a lot to have this type of recognition from our administrators and the school board. So I will announce the names. It's concert season, and there's a chorus concert at Bridle Path tonight, so many of our students are not here. So we have Elena Drelle. Gillian Hawthorne is not here. Isaac Chang. Elizabeth Nardone is not here. Nicholas Hartman. Charlie Hawthorne. Savannah Lanier not here. Hannah Kang. Nina Branch and Emerson Webb are not here. Carlos Grofels. Serion and Claire Holsinger are not here. TJ Winston Lee. Cameron Trumper. Brian Scott and Rea Ramen are not here. Ming Yu. Alexis Roberts. Malini Condesetti. Madeline Zinak is not here. Haley Switer. Vidica Deshpantan Pandey. Julian Oblak. Angel Caro is not here. Caleb Spalding. Malika Batra. Isaac Sun. And Jordan Shin.
Okay. Do you want to come through, too?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Next group of students we will recognize are members of the 2017-18 Penfield Jazz Band, and they were selected to perform at the Pennsylvania Educators Music Association's Conference. With us this evening to do the introductions, we have the Director of Penfield's Jazz Band, Dave Rohowski.
Thank you all, and good evening. It's a pleasure to be here and to present these fine students and musicians on their accomplishment in this past spring. Before doing so, I would like to also thank the Principal of Penfield, Mrs. Donna Dome, who traveled out to our conference in Lancaster, presided over the performance, and introduced the group, and spent some time with us, and it was great to have her with us. And I would also like to recognize 12 students who are not in the group. You see, the way this process works for these groups is that a year ago, we put together recordings to send, and they come from all over the state. Well, there are always some students who do a really great job in providing this opportunity, but they're not here in this group now, but because of their work and their musicianship, that opportunity is here, and I want to recognize them as well. They're in high school now, and their names are Gillian Durkin, Emma Daubert, Sidney Platt, Lauren Bland, Jacob Dardinsky, Katie Snyder, Gabriela Schwartz, Katherine Hahn, Jacob Stroll, excuse me, Jacob Stevens, Grace Riley, and Jesse Zou. Those students provided this opportunity, and by the length of that list, you can also tell this is a very new group we have this year, and they have exceeded expectation, worked extremely hard to reach their goals, and most importantly, have made some great music this year, and I am very, very proud of how far they have come. And as their Director and someone that spends a lot of time with them, it's been a great season of a lot of super performances, and certainly, performing at our State Educators Conference was a great way to culminate all that we have done this year. So tonight, we are pleased, I am pleased, to recognize the following students. They're being recognized for being a member of this jazz band this year and selected to perform at the Pennsylvania Educators Music Association Conference, and proudly I present them to you. Our first student is unable to be here tonight, 7th grader. His name is Ethan Bland. Our second student, let's get this started now, Ben Buckholz. Followed by Andrew Davis. Both trumpet players. I'll fill in some blanks here. Brendan Diffley, a tenor saxophone player. Darren Ezernak, trumpet player. Aiden Hayes, a trumpet player. Johnny Meng, saxophone. Ryan Perez, trombone. Michelle Schwartz, bass. Lilly Wang, piano and flute. And I should mention, all those 10 students, they are brand-new to this group and are all 7th graders, so we commend them for stepping up and learning so quickly with us. On to our 8th graders. Justin Yoderz, saxophone. Mahi Nuthanapati, saxophone. Josh Platt, drums and bass. Kevin Pritchett, trombone. CJ Poya, saxophone. David Riley, piano. Sean Snyder, tuba. Zach Vanitski, trumpet. Brandon Wang, saxophone. Justin Wang, trumpet. And the last four are real leaders of the group. There are four 9th graders who have done an exceptional job of mentoring these younger students. Ben Hartman, trombone. Ben Heck, drums. Connor Spence, piano. And Jeffrey Wang, drums. Congratulations to the students on their achievements, and thank you for having us this evening.
This evening, we're pleased to recognize students who participated in the 2018 Montgomery Association of Teachers of Foreign Languages James J. Doyle Proficiency Contest. And to do the introductions, this evening, on behalf of Norrie Coyle, the North Penn High School Japanese teacher, we do have Andrew Baker, North Penn High School German teacher.
Konbawa. That's "good evening" in Japanese. I'm not the Japanese teacher, as Dr. Dietrich so kindly introduced. I'm not Norrie Coyle. Andrew Baker, the German teacher. I'm here, as he also mentioned, to commend the achievements of the students here in the Japanese conversational skills. The Montgomery County Association of Teachers of Foreign Languages, every year, puts on a contest of just pure speaking skills. Sit down with area high school teachers, college professors, and see to how well they can speak better than I can speak English at this moment. I helped put it on, so I know how much work goes into it. I'm also, every time, every time, so impressed with what they can do, with what they can say, and looking back to my own history, what I couldn't say back in my third, fourth, fifth year of the language skills. The first student is Sam Vogel. Zachary Karf. Lamya Shushmi. Peter Engi. Alan McCoy. Abir Islam. Peter Lee, who was unable to make it tonight. And lastly, Christine Ma. The next group of students that we have here tonight is also representing the Japanese program here we have over at the high school. And yeah, I just want to take this moment also to thank the school board for all the support that they give to the Foreign Language Department, BPOT over in the high school. We're so happy to know that you're on our side, and we're also happy to bring the students here tonight to show what they can do. So this is for the National Japanese Exam, and it always impresses me with the National Japanese Exam, because many people with Japanese don't even know which side of the paper to start reading from. So these students in front of us have achieved either a gold or a silver on the national exam, which is used to, again, compare students across school districts across states. Our first recipient of the award is Jisoo Lee. Abigail Parrott couldn't be here tonight. Peter Engi. Brittany Do. Sung Chang. And lastly, Kai LaPriciosa.
Have a round of applause for the Japanese students, please.
Next up, we have recipients of either the Gold or Silver Award for the National German Exam, similar in nature to the National Japanese Exam. They've either achieved a gold or a silver, which marks them in the top 20 or 10th percentile in the nation. Our first recipient is Michael Cole, who got the Gold Award. Another Gold recipient couldn't unfortunately be here tonight, Grace Lewis, who also spent last year in Germany. Our next recipient, Mary Beth Niemann, who also achieved a gold. And who also spent last year in Germany, and just a quick note, so it's not like they cheated, they're actually measured against other students who have spent an extended period of time in a German-speaking country or grew up speaking German, so they're actually set aside, and they still achieved at the top 10 percentile even among that group of students. Our next students all received the Silver Award. Ally Robinson couldn't be here tonight. Zoe Robinson, her twin, is here tonight, who received the Silver Award. Jay Patel. Shaq Ramen, who also couldn't be here tonight. Pradyat Yadav. And Angie Wu.
And the final group we recognized this evening are members of the 2017-18 North Penn High School Academic Decathlon Team. And to recognize those students and do the introduction this evening, we do have Daniel Malarkey and Alexandra Hauser, two of our advisors.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Daniel Malarkey, and I get to be here tonight to recognize the hard work and dedication of the Academic Decathlon Team. Alexandra Hauser and I were honored to be the coaches of the team this year. Alexandra Hauser and I were honored to be the coaches of the team this year. We are and North Penn can be proud and inspired by their commitment to put in so many hours of study to compete against the best and the brightest high school students. So we would like to just talk about the team for just a second or two. We had a lot of turnover this year. We scrimmaged, we practiced, we studied, really the students led the way. We did secure the third place spot in the Eastern Divisional, which propelled us and qualified us to the state tournament. Only 14 schools qualified. We were the 13th ranked going in. We were able to finish in eighth in the States, so we outperformed ourselves. And we certainly are proud of the hard work, like I said, the dedication, and really just an unbelievable commitment. I mean, on top of their schoolwork, on top of their studies, on top of everything else they're involved in, this was extra work. So I think an extra appreciation is certainly felt by me and should be of all North Penn. All right, let's get to the recognition here. I would like to thank all of the members of the school board, Superintendent Dietrich, and the North Penn community for supporting Academic Decathlon. First up. Connie Jiang, our captain, who could best be described as driven, unfortunately is unable to make it. Yashida Thoda, who can best be described as focused, unfortunately is also unable to make it. Shri Krishna Shakravarti, who can best be described as hardworking. Colin Drennan, who can best be described as the comeback kid. Devin Fan, who can best be described as energetic, unable to make it. Jacob Halpern, who can best be described as dependable, unable to make it. Jessica Zhao, who can best be described as responsible. And Daniel Seibel, who can best be described as surprising, I would favor Renaissance man. Dan was the sole senior member of the Academic Decathlon Team this year. Dan will be majoring in cybersecurity and will be joining the wrestling team at the University of Pittsburgh Bradford next year.
Very impressive. A hand for the kids on the decathlon.
Thank you once again.
Thank you. So I'd just like to make the announcement that this school board meeting, in case anybody wants to watch, the proclamations again, will be aired on Comcast Cable, Channel 28, and Verizon FiOS, Channel 29, on the following dates. Friday, May 18th, at 7:30. Monday, May 21st, at 12:30 and 7:30. Tuesday, May 22nd, 12:30 and 7:30 p.m. And Wednesday, May 23rd, at 12:30 p.m. Thank you. Thank you for your patience while we rearranged chairs. It's kind of disorienting being over there. All right, so we're going to move on then to the audience of citizens. If anybody would like to make a public comment. Mr. Patchell, would you mind going second this evening? We have a state representative, Todd Stevens, here.
Oh, Todd, I would gladly relinquish my.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you so much. I do actually have another place to be, so I appreciate you taking me a little bit out of order. Mr. Patchell, thank you for the courtesy. I appreciate it very much. I really just wanted to stop in in advance of budget season in Harrisburg and just give the board a kind of a brief update on some of the things that we've been working on. And I won't belabor the point, but a little bit of historical context I think is important here. Several years ago, many of us fought to create a Basic Education Funding Commission in Harrisburg, and I was a part of that effort. We were able to get such a commission created. And as a matter of fact, I was able to have Dr. Dietrich and also Dr. Griffin from the Happer-Horsom School District testify before that commission. And the goal of that commission was to determine what are the true cost drivers that should be a part of any basic education funding formula. Up until a few years ago, when that formula ultimately went into place, politics was driving the school funding decisions. And frankly, that shouldn't be the case. We ought to have a student-driven formula that reflects the true costs of educating children. So that commission did its work, and it was, a formula was adopted on a bipartisan basis by the commission. And since then, the fight has been about implementing that formula and trying to drive as much of the basic education funding through that formula as possible. I've initiated several pieces of legislation in the past that would try to remedy the inequities that exist because of that old formula. And what Dr. Dietrich knows all too well, the hold harmless provision that prevailed in that formula for a long time and still exists in large measure in that formula. So about a month or so ago, my colleague, Representative White, Martina White from Philadelphia, and I submitted a cosponsor memo to drive all of the basic education funding through the formula that was adopted by the bipartisan Basic Education Funding Commission. And I did bring a copy of the cosponsor memo that we circulated and also the financial impact that that would have on the North Penn School District, which I think is noteworthy. I'll just pass these along. Thank you. In essence, you know, from the 30,000-foot view, if all the funding for this year ran through the Basic Education Funding Commission's formula, North Penn would have received about 65% more funding in terms of basic education funds from the state. The, I believe this year's allocation was about $10 million and would have been $16 million, as is reflected in the chart that was attached to the memo that I just passed around. So there are other competing proposals, and when I say competing, a number of us are working together to try to get as much of this funding driven through this formula as possible. My colleague, Representative Quigley, from out in the Royersford area, has a bill. His would sort of phase in the Basic Education Funding Formula appropriation over, I think his is five years, don't quote me on that, but it's over a period of time. And my colleague, Representative Cox, from Berks County, also has a proposal that would, again, phase in more of the funding rolling through this formula. As it stands now, what we've been doing the last couple of years since the formula was adopted was putting all new funding through the formula. But that leaves that existing chunk of basic education funding that had been in place up until a few years ago, still in place. And in essence, what has happened since, I think it was 1991, when the hold harmless provision went in, districts with declining enrollment continue to receive the same appropriation. As a result, districts with increasing enrollment since 1991 have a smaller pie from which they are sharing the funds. And so that's why we have such a disproportionate funding scheme in Pennsylvania. There are some districts that are getting $600 per student, and there are some districts that are getting over $10,000 per student. You know, in percentages, there are districts that are getting over 70% of their funding from the state, and then there are others that are getting more like 15, 16, 17% of their funding from the state. And these inequities are largely driven by this hold harmless provision that was put in place so many years ago. So I did want to just let you know that many of us are continuing to fight on this front. And there are several proposals, and you know, we're trying to make it a part of the budget conversation this year to appropriate more, in my case, all, but you know, compromise is always a critical component of democracy. You know, as much as we can get the basic education funding run through the formula that was adopted on a bipartisan basis. So I just wanted to share that information with you. You know, as some of the other media outlets have reported, some of the districts that benefit from the provision, the hold harmless provision, are some of the leaders in the House and Senate. And so, you know, it's a battle every year to try to pry some more of that funding to run through the formula, but we keep at it and we'll keep fighting and doing all we can. I know that the district certainly could use that influx of $6 million if we were able to secure it. You guys are doing a terrific job with the funds that you have. And you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, a shout out to all the students from Bridle Path Elementary, and I think you said Montgomery Elementary was here too. I'll actually be at Bridle Path tomorrow, speaking with the fourth graders. So it's great to run into some tonight, and I appreciate the fact that you are recognizing them for their outstanding achievements.
Thank you, Representative Stevens, and thank you for coming out and giving us that information tonight. Do you have any suggestions for anything that we can do to help you push that bill along? Should we?
That would be terrific. Look, any, I know in the past I've received letters of support or resolutions in support of these types of initiatives. To the extent you could adopt something along those lines or communicate in some fashion your support to a broader, wider audience, that would be terrific. And to the extent you could share that with your other school districts. I do have, and I can maybe send it over to Dr. Dietrich if you like, I have a spreadsheet showing the impact on every district in the Commonwealth. And as you can probably imagine, Montgomery County sees a pretty big benefit from running the funds through the fairest funding formula that is out there. But I'm happy to share that as well, so that maybe you can take a look at the impact on some of the other school districts. And to the extent you have working relationships with other school boards, they may be interested in signing on on a joint effort.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
This is extremely important to North Penn School District. I do thank Representatives Stevens and White for introducing House Bill 2417. As Representative Stevens mentioned, I do appreciate also that I had the opportunity to testify in front of the Basic Education Funding Commission. That was a bipartisan commission. We came up with a fair funding formula, and now we need to be able to put that into full force. And I highly commend those that are trying to get that done posthaste. I know that there is an issue with the hold harmless, but at the minimum, we need to be much more aggressive with getting that into place than we are right now. So I do commend the representatives for putting this House Bill 2417 in front of everyone. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night.
I think it's very excellent that our representative in the state government chose to appear before you and illuminate you on some of the things that are happening in the state government and in the areas of education. I was looking at that myself, and I was looking at the various school districts, and it's very interesting. I wonder if it would be possible to reach a consensus. I was looking at a district called Turkeyfoot, has 352 students, so I just was wondering how their funding is. Some of these rural districts, oh, you have a swimming pool? That's really fantastic. We might have it someday. So there is an unequitable distribution of money in this state. We live in a little corner down here. We have Merck, we have a lot of revenue. Montgomery County just got the AAA rating, and they said after hard work and due diligence and everything, that they were able to recover their AAA rating like we enjoy. Some of those poor places in the state, I mean, I almost feel sorry for them. I feel sorry for the students because if you want to have equal education given to all the people in the Commonwealth, you have to understand, where do you live? I live in Cameron County. It's pretty bad up there, you know? We just don't have, you know, we're not getting the severance tax for the shale, we're not doing, so I don't know how this is all going to work out. Everybody looks at this throw, so does draw, because they just see North Penn School District, and how we're going to make out. And I believe, I'm still getting the representative's office to check in, that I believe when the high school was built, it was in violation of the state, but we did it anyway. And York County decided that they would like to do that too, but they relinquished their position. And I believe there's two high schools that they developed, so we just proceeded anyway. So now you'll see we have problems. Since I live within walking distance of Bridle Path, and I was really excited to see those young people, I'm sure that some family would love to rent my home just for the music program. I wonder how that would play out on Zelo, I guess on an international basis. Some of these people, they want to buy a home according to what they'll be able to derive when they move. You know, it takes precedence over stainless appliances and whatever you have in a house. They're really interested, like, we moved here because of the string ensemble. It's a little disturbing to know that there is so little lack of inventiveness in the system of tax, spend, tax, spend. It's always going up. Every single year, it goes up. You know why I moved to Montgomery Township? Haven't had a tax increase in about nine years. It's the epitome of a well-run municipality. And that's why I live there, and it's rated number 58 in the country. I mean, there's lots of townships. 58, that is, that's a broad spectrum of things that are important, but 58? I'm pretty impressed. Through my due diligence, I moved there like 25 years ago, so I knew it was probably going to be a good deal. Okay?
Mr. Patchell?
Yes.
You hit the three-minute mark.
What?
You hit the three-minute mark.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Would anyone else like to speak to the public comment? Thank you.
There's no pen up here.
Mr. Patchell, do you know what, the pen?
That was mine. There was no pen.
Oh, okay. We'll make sure to get it back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily Strake, 107 Hemlock Drive, North Wales, 19454. I'm here tonight to keep the discussion going on the way this district is making up snow days. The school board should have no interest in the vacation schedule of parents. Yet, in two meetings and a handful of emails, the March vacation schedule of a small number of parents is the only reason you've provided for the change in snow makeup days that was adopted in June of last year. Your primary responsibility is the education of the students. Yet, you've built no snow makeup days into the regular calendar year so that students can make up lost instruction time. Instead, they're now tacked on to the end of June like an afterthought. This year, students lost eight days of school in March ahead of the PSSAs. This year, students lost eight days of school in March ahead of the PSSAs, had an early dismissal, two other days in March. That time should have been made up on designated days during spring break and in April when it would have benefited the students the most. Another primary responsibility of this board is to provide for the relative care and comfort of students, yet you've added an extra week of school deep into June when many of the buildings don't have air conditioning. This district has an interest in summer education and enrichment programs, yet you've made it impossible for parents like me to organize the summer camp schedule accurately. This year, I spent $525 on a week of summer camp I don't need. Build in snow makeup days like the vast majority of other Pennsylvania districts do. My last exchange with Christian in email, he said we would need majority support to move on this issue. Where does the board stand?
I think we have to have that brought before the board and in action, so.
This is an opportunity just for you to comment to the board on any issues of concern that you have. Do you have any additional comment?
What additional items or action items can I make in order to move the issue?
Well, you can't make the action, we have to have it come from committee to the board, so.
How can I advocate better for the issue and understand what the board is doing?
We operate under a committee system here, so ECP committee would be the committee that would determine whether or not they want to take up, you know, this discussion. So I would encourage your attendance at the ECP committee meeting.
Can I ask if the board has any other rationale for the way the calendar is structured this year other than parent vacations in March?
I mean, again, I would highly suggest you come to the ECP committee meeting to have more discussion about this. This is, you know, an opportunity for public comment. It's not really designed to have, you know, members of the public come to the podium to question the board and get immediate responses, but just generally, it's a complicated matter and I'll tell you that. We do have speakers that we do engage in various professional development where we have contracts with people. And one of those days generally is the day before our spring vacation, our spring break in there, so that was a matter of great concern that a previous board had considered. They did make an adjustment in the calendar after the one you're referencing to move all of the makeup days at the end of the year there. So there are lots of different ways you can do it. I would encourage you to come to an ECP committee meeting though for more in-depth discussion.
I thank you for that. I have been to one of those meetings and spoken and I'll continue to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Strake. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment tonight?
Tori Young, 791 Collins Avenue. Again. Hello again. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address all of you on this topic again about class size, but specifically to request an additional section for the upcoming fifth grade class at Gwinnett Square. I don't intend to repeat myself from last month or frivolously use anyone's valuable time. I do want to follow up with some data that I was requested to provide. Dr. Holben and Mrs. Berkowski asked me to provide some data at last month's ECP meeting and so I'm not sure that this would be the meaning to provide that data, but here I am. So what I have found from the NEPC National Education Policy Center, written by Diane Whitmore Schausenbach from Northwestern University, she states the following in her 2014 publishing, I'm not going to read the whole thing, I'm just going to take snippets. Quote, "Class size matters. Research supports the common sense notion that children learn more and teachers are more effective in smaller classes. Class size is an important determinant of student outcomes and one that can be directly determined by policy. All else being equal, increasing class size will harm student outcomes." From my discussions with many of you over the past month and over the years in trying to make some headway with this class at Gwinnett Square, it does seem to be that there's a consensus that class size does matter, that people are prioritizing and trying to look at what needs to be done and how it can be done. And unfortunately, there's a subjectivity to it. Obviously, budget goes into it and the logistics of where the class is going to go and the teachers and how that can be facilitated. And quite bluntly, I think that those things sometimes are just some canned answers to appease people. I feel like from first grade till now, the end of fourth grade, it's sort of been like a hold your breath and wait type of situation with the classes there at Gwinnett Square, particularly in second grade. When the now-fourth graders were in second grade, the needs of the students exceed the instruction that they're given, not because the teachers are not great teachers, not because the school is not a great school. I'm just asking for your commitment to add a section for next year for that grade. The numbers seem to keep increasing and the needs seem to continue to grow, especially post-full inclusion, as mentioned last month. As far as the data goes, in addition to the findings, and I have a bunch with me, but some are contradictory because of the variables, and what I'm asking you is to listen to the constituents, listen to the stakeholders, listen to the teachers, who quite frankly, some are afraid to speak up, some parents are afraid to speak up. I have offered to represent the group and I will conclude, thank you, and just ask for more time for your commitment to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? All right, moving on then. I have approval of the minutes from, sorry, from April 19th and May 8th. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Berkowski, seconded by Mr. Diazio. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I guess that's Alicia. Okay. Yeah. The voice from above. Okay. Bob Gilmore said that would happen. All right, moving on to committee reports. Personnel. I don't think, we didn't have a meeting, so let's just move on to finance. Mr. Diazio.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met on April 30th, 2018. The monthly financial reports and the budget transfers were reviewed with the committee. There was additional discussion held on the following items. Safe Schools Budget Funding. Mr. Dur presented various options and recommendations for Safe Schools Initiatives for the 2018-2019 school year. Recommendations included a Mass Notification System, Behavioral Threat Assessment, and Surveillance System enhancements. All of those items have been included in the proposed 1819 budget. Committee also received an update on the 2018-2019 budget. Mr. Skrocky presented an update on the budget and changes were made since the previous Finance Committee meeting. Mr. Skrocky reviewed several budget scenarios along with the impact on the average homeowner under each scenario. The Act One index for 1819 is 2.4% and the maximum increase with the exceptions is 3.1, 3.4% if Act One exceptions are used for special education and retirement costs. The next item was the Benefits Presentation. Mrs. Schmidt gave a presentation on the benefits program for the district and information about new health care plans being offered effective July 1st, 2018. Final health care rates for next school year were reviewed. There'll be a $2 million savings over 1718 primarily as a result of plan design changes. And finally, the five-year financial projections were reviewed. Mr. Skrocky presented five multi-year projection scenarios based on various assumptions. 10 additional scenarios were shared at the May Work Session Meeting as well. Items recommended for the Action Meeting of the Budget Transfers for March 2018. Those items are on tonight's agenda. The next meeting of the committee is Monday, June 25th, 2018 at 6:30 p.m. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Diazio. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Diazio? Okay, then moving on to Safe Schools, Mr. Casa.
Thank you. The Safe Schools Committee has not met since the April School Board Meeting. This is due to a realignment along with the ECP schedule, so the next meeting is going to be on Thursday, May 24th at 6:00 p.m. here at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. Casa? Okay, moving on then to Support Services, oh, I'm sorry, Education, Community and Policy. Mr. Fusco.
The ECP Committee met on Tuesday, April 24th. At that meeting, the committee reviewed an action item concerning the summer school remedial programs for 2018. A course recovery opportunity will be provided for students who are in grades nine through 12 and will begin on June 25th and continue through August 3rd. After reviewing the annual summer school program, it has been restructured to a hybrid model that will combine instruction in the classroom on Tuesdays and Thursdays with online instruction and work on Mondays and Wednesdays. Courses to be offered are English, Mathematics, Science, Social Studies, and Health Physical Education. Also this summer, the Summer Keystone Intervention Program will be conducted. It provides six days of instruction from July 23rd through July 31st. Students will take the Keystone Exam on August 1st and 2nd. Both programs are supported by tuition payments. The committee also received information regarding the Restorative Practices Initiative at North Bridge School. The purpose of this program is to develop and foster a more collaborative atmosphere, more engagement, and an increased sense of community among staff and students. It is being used both in the classroom and in staff meetings resulting in improved attendance, academic achievement, and behavior, as well as increased morale among staff and students. A review of work completed to date by the district's kindergarten task force was presented during the meeting. The information presented focused on data collected from the pilot programs at Oak Park and Napp Elementary School as well as the budgetary, staff, and infrastructure needs as they are currently understood in order to implement a full-day kindergarten program. It was determined that the most effective way to deliver a series of survey questions intended to collect input from the community around the topic of full-day kindergarten should be included as part of the district's strategic planning process. A proposed timeline was discussed to move the issue of full-day kindergarten from the ECP Committee to the full board for discussion and eventual board vote. A review of the space utilization study for the elementary schools will be presented at this upcoming ECP meeting and a detailed plan to implement FDK, sorry, full-day kindergarten, is scheduled to be presented at the September ECP meeting with a possible review by the full board in October. The next ECP meeting will be on Thursday, May 24th at 6:30. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. Fusco? Okay. And moving on to the Support Services.
Thank you. The Support Services Committee met on April 30th, 2018. Scott Kennedy, Mr. Kennedy reviewed the status of Architectural RFP Request for Proposal Process. First-round interviews were completed on April 11th. Final interviews with the board were conducted on April 25th. Site visits with the two finalists were completed last week. There is a recommendation on tonight's agenda for the architect to complete a feasibility study. Mr. Kennedy also presented a contract update to purchase electricity for Hatfield Elementary School from Direct Energy. Mr. Kennedy presented a change order for electrical work for the HVAC project at Gwinor Elementary School. And then the committee reviewed the bid results from Montgomery County IU bid for trash and recycling services. The new three-year contract is $7,500 lower than our current three-year contract. The committee then reviewed the proposed meeting dates for 2019. Mr. Lanetti gave a presentation on the Support Services Department and its accomplishments for the prior year, including metrics. The committee reviewed the existing practice for approving time-sensitive change orders during the summer construction projects. And lastly, the next Support Services Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 29th, 2018 at 6:00 p.m. here at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. Casa? Okay, then moving on to the North Monco Technical Career Center. Is that you, Ms. Otte, or Mr. Diazio?
I don't believe we've met since the last meeting. We meet on Monday, May 21st at 7:00 o'clock p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, Ms. Ramich.
I regret that because of a concert at Napp, I was not able to attend the last meeting. The next meeting, which I will be attending, is scheduled for May 23rd. At the last meeting, I do know that they presented and I do believe approved a kind of a reconfiguration of how school districts nominate and the timing for nominations and I believe that's on the agenda here.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm sorry, what did you say the next meeting was?
May 23rd.
Okay. North Penn Educational Foundation, I know that's you, Ms. Otte.
The foundation last met on May 9th at the ESC. The foundation reviewed the success of our recent online auction, which brought in more than $10,500 in bids for incredible items donated by North Penn staff members and community business. This was our best auction yet, raising almost $2,500 more than last year, so I want to thank everyone who donated items and everyone who bid on them. Yep, I got outbid as well as you for that one. Trustees also approved meeting dates for the 2018-2019 school year. We meet the first Wednesday of every month excluding July and January at 7:45 a.m. at the ESC. We are always looking for interested community members who would like to get involved at the district level in helping our students. Our next big fundraiser is the annual golf outing, which is being held Monday, August 13th at Pinecrest Golf Course. We're currently looking for major sponsors, so we also discussed trying the golf outing to, tying the golf outing to a school supply drive to help our families with back-to-school needs. More information on this will be coming next month. Parents are invited to thank the North Penn staff members who made a difference in their child's life this year with an end-of-the-year contribution to the Educational Foundation through our Staff Tribute Program. Forms to do so are available on the foundation's website. Money raised through the online auction, the upcoming golf outing, and the Staff Tribute Program will all be used towards grants throughout the school year. On May 21st, the foundation's Grant Review Committee will be discussing 52 requests recently reviewed, recently received from North Penn staff totaling more than $39,000. Typically, the foundation funds approximately $20,000 to $25,000 to begin the school year. The foundation's next meeting is Wednesday, June 6th. If you have any questions about the foundation, you can contact Christine Libaroski at the ESA. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Otte. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Otte? Okay. And I believe we move on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Dietrich?
Thank you. I do recommend acceptance of the letter of resignation dated May 3rd, 2018 from North Penn School Board Director Mark Warren, effective May 15th, 2018.
Do I have a motion?
Motion with regret.
Do I have a second? Motion by Mrs. Berkowski, seconded by Mr. Fusco. And it is regretful, Terry. We'll miss Mark, it is a regret. We'll miss Mr. Warren for sure. Okay, do we have any comments or questions?
Just thank you, Mark, for your service. I enjoyed working with you in the short time we were together. Wish him the best.
Wish him all the best, Terry. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right.
Recommend approval of the 2019 School Board Work Session Action Meeting Dates and the 2019 School Board Committee Meeting Dates as attached.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
As was mentioned, we do need to nominate a school board candidate to serve a two-year term for July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. term for July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020 for the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors, so we would need to do that now.
I recommend that we nominate Julianne Ramich to serve the two-year term from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020 on the MCU Board.
Do I have a second? Is that okay with you, Mrs. Ramich?
Absolutely.
Volunteer you, okay.
Happy to serve.
Any comments or questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the student travel items as indicated.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Burkowski, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the North Penn High School and all secondary schools' summer school programs.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Burkowski. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions?
Just thank you to the four groups that donated.
Thank you, Ms. Ott. Appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of contracts which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Burkowski, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of alternative placements as listed and copies are on file in the Office of Special Education.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Burkowski and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the employee assistance contract with the Penn Foundation, effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, at a total cost of $24,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Burkowski, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions?
Question. Is, this is just staff, not the student program? That's a separate program?
Correct, Mrs. Burkowski. This is for staff involvement and support.
Okay. It seems like a good rate.
It is. It's been pretty status quo for several years. They work with us very well. Our staff are very appreciative of the opportunities, and we typically have about 100% satisfaction when we get our reports back with regards to the participation rates, either from voluntary or mandatory referrals.
Good. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of a facility study by Schrader Group Architecture LLC.
So moved.
In the amount of $43,400 for NAP Elementary School, North Penn High School, the Educational Service Center, Pendale Middle School. Payment to be made from the Capital Reserve Fund.
So moved. I'm with excitement. Somebody's a little eager. Thank you.
Motion by Mrs. Ramich, seconded by everybody else. Do we have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, did you have?
Must have been.
Oh, oh, yeah, I keep hearing that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alicia.
Just to confirm, the fee for this study, if we opt to move forward with a construction project, do we get any or all of that fee back?
We do. If we proceed and Schrader does the design for any work, once we exceed $120,000 in total fees, they will refund the full amount of the facility study back to the school district.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, all in favor?
Common.
Oh, did we approve? Okay, sorry. Lost my train of thought. Sorry. All right, so.
Next item?
Yep.
Recommend approval of the establishment of a construction fund account with the Pennsylvania School District Asset Fund for the balance of Bond Fund 31.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the bid awards as presented in May of 2018. That would cover music equipment for 2017-18, athletic medical supplies, athletic supplies, phys ed supplies, phys ed uniforms, science supplies, and trash and recycling bids.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Burkowski, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Casa.
Just want to make sure that we give credit to the administration, that this isn't just acceptance of bids when they're turned in. I'm very happy to see through this process that there are rejections and that this is vetted thoroughly. I think that needs to be noted. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of a change order to Electrotech to relocate an electrical feeder for the Gwinor HVAC project in the amount of $3,059.14.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second? Have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Burkowski, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the personnel items as listed.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Burkowski and seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Any comments or questions?
One quick comment. I spoke last month about my fourth-grade teacher that was retiring, and today I get to wish my third-grade teacher in retirement. So Jackie Geddes retiring from Montgomery, one of the kindest people, I think, that has ever worked for this school district. Just a great attitude, always a smile on her face, so certainly wish her well. And I also obviously know that we are accepting the retirement of our Assistant Superintendent tonight, and that is very bittersweet. Diane, you've been fantastic and have truly left a mark here on North Penn. I think I speak for everybody when I say we're going to miss you and wish you nothing but the best in the future.
Yes, thank you very much, Dr. Holman, for everything you've done. I know this was a lot, especially with so many new people coming on the board, so we really appreciate it and wish you all the best in your future. Any other comments?
I would like to wish, well, you too, but I'd like to wish Mrs. Geddes a good retirement. She was surprised made in my wedding.
Oh. Love that.
But best wishes to you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor then?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend adoption of the 2018-19 Proposed Final Budget Resolution in the amount of $260,402,826 per PVE Form 2028, and the authorization to publish notice to adopt the final budget in accordance with the Pennsylvania School Code and act as per the attached.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Do we have any comments or questions? Did you have a comment, Mrs. Burkowski? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Oppose.
Opposed.
Recommend a roll call vote to clarify the vote. Thank you. Mr. Ramich? Mrs. Burkowski?
Nay.
Ms. Ott?
Nay.
Mr. Casa?
Yay.
Mrs. Gee, can you hear us on the phone? Your vote, please.
Yeah, yea.
Thank you. Mr. Fusco?
Yea.
Yes. Mr. D'Azio?
No.
And Mrs. Stoll?
Yes.
We have five yes votes, three no votes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Scrocky.
Thank you.
Moving on then to the Finance Report. Mr. Scrocky?
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of quick updates before I deliver the Finance Report. First off, we're near the end of May at this point in time, so our latest projections show that we're going to, our revenues are going to exceed our budget figures by $2.8 million. Obviously, it's very positive news. We've had strong real estate tax collection, earned income tax collection, realty transfer tax collection, and in particular, interest earnings in the current year have exceeded our budget figures. Interest earnings alone, for example, are projected to exceed the budget by $1.1 million. So that makes up the lion's share of our projected $2.8 million positive variance. On the expenditure side, we are expecting to spend less money than was budgeted by about $2.6 million. So we began the year with a budget of minus $4.5 million of budget deficit. At the present time, though, we're projecting an end-of-year surplus of about $872,000 for this fiscal year. So that's certainly excellent news. We're very pleased with only one and a half months to go in this fiscal year. Second item I'd like to comment on, yesterday we received notification from the Department of Education that we received two $5,000 grants through our National School Lunch Program, in particular, our School Nutrition Services Program. We applied for a breakfast card, a mobile breakfast card, to try to increase participation for delivery of breakfast for our students at North Penn High School and at Pendale Middle School. So we received notification that we received both of those $5,000 grants for each building. Onto the Treasures Report. This report is for the month of April, 2018. Cash receipts for April totaled $3,797,242.86, while disbursements for the month totaled $17,448,481.11, so about a $14 million outflow in funds during the month of April. We ended the month with available funds totaling $93,751,742.13, and that's about a $1 million increase over the same period last year. Questions on the Treasures Report. We do have this listed for action, so we would need a formal vote to accept the Treasures Report, if we could, please.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Any comments or questions for Mr. Scrocky? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item are the budget transfers for the month of March, 2018. They totaled $247,383.79. We're recommending approval.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Burkowski. Any comments or questions for Mr. Scrocky? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We do have the financial reports posted on board docs for your information. That's just an informational item, so we move on to the next item, an action item. This is the sanction and approval of invoices. We have a total for the month of April of $21,305,723.69. We're recommending ratification of those disbursements.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion by Mrs. Burkowski and seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions for Mr. Scrocky? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to Other Business, and I don't think we have anything, right? Nope, so, any other comments or questions or anything?
One thing, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate way to do it or not. We do need to have a vote on whether or not to add Alicia Gee to the ECP Committee officially. Can we do that in, at this point, or?
Under Other Business?
All right. Well, then I'd make a motion to add Alicia Gee to the ECP Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Burkowski. Any comments or questions? Would anyone like to make public comment regarding the extra member on ECP?
On this motion?
On this motion? No, seeing none. Guess we'll take the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fusco.
Thank you.
All right, does anyone else have any comments or anything they want to discuss?
Just a question, strategic plan. Are we still moving along on a timeline, or what's our timeline? Do we have any update for the Board?
I think we were waiting for people to finish doing the dot voting, and then we have to make a determination of which of these strategies are the ones that the Board wishes to move forward into the strategic plan.
I assume.
Once we have that in place, you know, we're working on some of the other, some of the kind of the background information pieces, but once we have that in place, then we can move forward with actually writing the goals and actions.
So the fact that we're not done this process on the Board, it's not holding up the other pieces?
It's not holding up. The way that plan is put together by the Department of Education, there's a whole front section that really is kind of a, giving the status of where things are at the district. That part we can, we can work on, and I've been working on with Dr. Butts. The piece where we have to identify goals, strategies, and actions for the next three years, that's very dependent on finishing this process.
Great.
I'd like us all to commit to making sure that we get our dots on tonight so that we can keep this process going. I understand that the administration is keeping the ball rolling on our behalf, so thank you. But we've also just voted to move a budget forward that includes funding for these things, and I feel like we need to play catch-up. I'm very uncomfortable moving forward, requesting this funding, and requesting commitments from taxpayers and putting burden on them without us having fully gone through this process. And so I think if we could all commit to finishing this tonight so that we can move on, I think it would make us all feel a little bit better about the budget and things that are going through.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Mr. Casa, do you have a comment?
I thank you for that comment and that focus, and I certainly am fully committed in joining you with that sentiment. Thank you.
I would like to hear more detail on some of the pieces that are up there that I just, I'm not, what it means to you and what it means to me are very different. And I don't know when that will happen. Do we vote first and find out later, or, because I have not voted yet.
You haven't put your green dots up yet, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I certainly can answer any questions. We had gone through that at a previous meeting.
Yeah, but I'm.
Albeit rather rapidly. So are there any in particular, Terry, that you'd like to have a little more discussion about? Would you like to do that offline? I mean, I'll do it whatever you would prefer. I can certainly do it now, or we can do it.
Or should we have another work session with it?
Yeah, I'll do whatever.
I think there's value, I want to second your, your comments and feedback, too. I think that there's value in us discussing this. So, you know, as we are, I mean, again, I'm going to go back to the budget, but as we are requesting, you know, funding to cover some of these costs, I think it's so important for us to all be on the same page, and for us to then hear from administration what their us to then hear from administration what their ideas are, because I think there are a lot of things that we're putting forward with hope that things may happen this year or they might be linked to the possible tax increase in this year's budget, but may not be feasible down the road. I think there's a lot of things, you know, I think looking at the issue of full-day kindergarten, we know that that's not going to happen within a 12-month period, that there is some ramping up that has to be done and I, so I think that there's, I think there's so much value in the process that we're, that we're neglecting and so I fully support moving forward with the work session so that we can keep the conversations going. Not only for us to discuss amongst ourselves as, as the board, but really to get the, the input and the expertise from administration as well.
One example is, under instruction of the fourth one over here, the second item down says kindergarten readiness strategies, full-day kindergarten. Well, I'm in favor of the first part. I'm not necessarily right away in favor of the second part. I think it should be two items and I, I'm ultimately in favor of kindergarten readiness. We need that. But does it have to be with Susan's favorite, full-day kindergarten?
Sure.
You know, it, to me, it's, they're very different. So there's things like that, do you want to put a red one on the bottom and a green one on the top or just a yellow one in the middle?
Right. Sure.
But things like that is what I don't. Website modernization. Other than the mandate that we have to make it for easy access of every, what do we have to do?
So would you like to have more discussion of the work session?
Well, when a lot of the, yeah.
We can do that.
I think it's a good point and I think we probably should do a work session. That would be my opinion.
Work session in June?
Yeah.
Which is?
Is that timing okay in terms of our plan?
Yes, I think, again, it has to go to, the final plan needs to go to ECP, probably the meeting at the end of September to be able to, because if you take it to meet, now that we have meetings at the end of the month, you can't take it the end of October because you won't make a 28-day public comment period by the November action meeting. So back mapping off of that, if we have to have it ready by the end of September, we need to set the priorities early enough that we can flesh that out before then.
And if you didn't, you could have a special action meeting to vote just on that?
You could, yes, absolutely, you could. But it has to be to the Department of Ed by the end of November, so that's, the drop dead is it has to be submitted to PDE by November 30th.
So the next works, work session is June 12th. Is that okay to, how that is the topic for conversation for that night?
Yeah, I think if we have, I mean, just from my personal standpoint, I think if, if we have clear priorities set, then I don't think it's real difficult for us to put verbiage to that. It's more just a function of, I think as Chris and I had discussed last week, once everybody's done their voting, we've had whatever discussion we want to have, where's the cut? How many dots makes the cut? You know, or is there some other way to get to, of all these things, which are the ones that, that make the, the final list? That's really what we need to get to, to finish it. Dr. Dietrich, another thought that Mrs. Stoll and I just had, if we're going to be taking any type of action at the June work session, we may need to convert that meeting into a special action meeting?
Well, clearly with the acceptance of the letter of resignation effective May 15th for School Director Mark Warren, we do have 30 days to fill that and we would have to take action prior to our next regularly scheduled action meeting, which would fall after the 30 days. So yes, we do need to take action that evening on that item in particular and then any other items that we would like to take action on, but then we would reserve time that evening for work session topic and this discussion, the strategic plan would be appropriate for that.
Okay.
I think that's what we did when we appointed Julianne, right? We had a work session first and then we had an action meeting. Yeah, yeah, okay.
You'll take care, Steve, of the advertising that has to be done?
Well, since we advertise our work sessions, that voting may occur. We actually don't need any additional advertising.
Okay, great.
So we'll just have the agenda structured, have work session followed by action.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
It might be helpful if we are going to be appointing a board member that night to do that first so that the new board member, whoever he or she is, has the benefit of the, the discussion on these items later in the meeting.
Right, might be throwing that person into the deep end of the pool, too, right, Julianne?
Well, even just to hear the discussion.
No, I think that's, I think, well, that's different than launching into financial dis, yes, you know, so. No, but I think it was fine. I, I, I think that it's, it's, it's throwing them in, but it will, it's a, it's a, this is a good thing to be introduced to.
Okay.
They'll be thrown in one way or another.
Right. All right, is there any other comment, questions? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Can I just, I just want to make a quick comment. I just want to thank all of the elementary school gym teachers that have worked to organize the Iron Knights. I've seen hundreds of kids that are gearing up and are so excited and we've participated in the past and it's, their engagement in that activity is, it's just, it's always been so worthwhile and so fulfilling, so I just want to wish everyone who's participating in that on Saturday the best of luck.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one quick comment. I hope I'm not too loud, I've been trying not to talk. I just wanted to commend Dr. Holman and Dr. Buz. I attended the in-service on Tuesday, which was outstanding for our teachers, the professional development that was put together was absolutely top-notch. There were more than 14 or 15 different workshops, including two keynote speakers on school safety and just really well done. I heard lots of great comments from our teachers for how excited they were about the day and so I just wanted to commend Dr. Buz and Dr. Holman and their team because they put a lot of work into it.
Thank you, Mrs. Gee.
And while we're on the subject of professional development. I heard a comment at, at the polls on Tuesday from a, I guess it was a support staff person, a non-teacher, put it that way. And, and I, I said, so how was professional development day today? And she said, we don't get it. You know, and I was kind of surprised, I was caught off guard on that. And she said, not that we can't learn anything, so I would like to suggest we look into that because there are a lot of things that they could.
There are, and the point's well taken. We do need to negotiate additional days in the support union's contract. Many of those individuals are in 183-day contracts, so if we have 180 days a school, we only have three days. And then some of those three days get used up in other ways also, so I would highly recommend that. I do think we have many topics that we could do in professional development, but we do need an expanded contract agreement with the support union.
I also think in terms of professional development, looking at professional development for us as a board is also important and I'm going to be sending around an opportunity that is, dates that would, would go through the summer and through the year. Mana-on-Maine offers a fantastic training and I, I learned it, about it actually through teachers. And I think that Dr. Holman shared with me, and as I was making considerations about the budget, one of the demographic upticks that's shown a steady increase is that of students who are experiencing, are at an economic disadvantage. And so I've been very concerned and very thoughtful with the budget that we put forward with proposed tax increases. We've often talked about the burden that we would, that this would place on seniors, but there's also a burden on kids within our own district. But I also recognize that those are also kids who are in the greatest need of us to be able to provide the best quality service. But I think looking at the issues that, that this brings to our district, I think it's so important that as board members that we're aware, so within the week, I will circulate and share those dates and I, I encourage and challenge us to develop ourselves professionally as well and to attend it.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Mr. Casa?
And I just wanted to ask a follow-up question to Ms. Prokowsky's question about the staff, the non-teacher staff training. Is there, has there been before or has an advisory board been looked at with that staff and some of their leadership so they can, we could at least have the discussion and see if there's progress?
I'm not aware of it, I was not on any.
Yeah, and again, there are different employee groups within the, the support union, for example. We do have some training for our special education assistants. There's some of that is mandated, some of that is North Penn-driven that we do have to accomplish. Then we also have some level of professional development for our secretarial staff. Sometimes that happens on a more of a luncheon-learn sort of a program to be able to provide some PD for them on the use of various software, that sort of thing. And then you have other employee groups, subgroups within that group, too, where we try to meet their needs. We do have some folks that do attend conferences outside of North Penn that are within that grouping, but, but no matter, all, all total, we don't have enough time, quite frankly, for professional development. And I'll make that statement not just for our support staff, I think generally, the employees that are not on 12-month contracts, we have a hard time getting all of the professional development done that we need and that's a major challenge for us.